Good evening, everybody. Can we stand for the pledge, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing, one nation under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all. The court will take roll call.
Councilman Ronald Quagliani.
Present.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor.
Councilwoman O'Neal O'Connor here.
Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, Councilman Lawrence, present.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky first, District President.
Councilwoman Melie Garthwaite.
Councilwoman Melie Garthwaite second, District President.
Councilwoman Sarah Akerbally is absent. Councilwoman Mitchell Galagnano absent. Councilwoman Robin Wat- Hamilton is on her way. Just got a text from her. Councilwoman Kathy Tucker. Councilman Victor Boras.
Councilman Victor Boras, eighth District, present.
Councilman Robert Bruno is...
Present.
There he is, okay. Uh, Councilman Stephen Johnstone.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone, Tenth District, present.
And Chairman Peter Massaro.
Chairman Peter Massaro, Sixth District, Councilman President. Court will read the call of the meeting for tonight.
In accordance with Rule Number 11, the rules governing the actions of the City Council, Chairman Massaro has called a special meeting, Council as a whole, of the West Haven City Council, to be held at six o'clock for the public hearing and six thirty PM on Wednesday, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. The meeting will be held at the City of West Haven, uh, second floor Harriet Court North Room, courtroom.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, before we start public, public, uh, hearing, we'll have, um, Doug Coulter and our Finance Director, Scott Jackson, but I don't see him yet, uh, are gonna do a presentation on the ARPA funds. Uh, after that's done, then the public could start, uh, they could ask any questions they want, and they also can ask, uh, the Finance Director and Doug for any questions they would like to ask. So, Mr. Coulter, you wanna come up and do your presentation?
Good evening, Chairman. Mr. Jackson had parental duties, so he may be coming in behind us, but he'll be available to answer questions later tonight. I just wanna say on behalf of the staff that had worked on this plan, uh, it's quite exciting to have such an opportunity to engage with the community and see what we could do with this unique opportunity, and, uh, we're grateful, um, to the Mayor for providing leadership to get us through this. It was quite the haul, as you can imagine, so, um, I'll, I'll start with a preamble. This is like an hour-long slideshow, and Chairman wants me to get through it in a half-an-hour, so, uh...
Make it shorter.
So, um, there's a lot of text here. I promised not to read the slides, and I will email all of you a copy of the slideshow if you wanna see what the text is about. So, the state and local fiscal recovery funds are provided to us by the federal government through the Treasury, uh, to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19. There are some key principles. They want us to do a swift and effective implementation, but they also want us to play by the rules and spend the money wisely and within the guidelines. There are a couple statutory uses that, uh, guide how we disperse these funds, to respond to the public health emergency, to respond to workers performing essential work, provision of government services that were affected by revenue loss, and to make any necessary investments in particular items, such as water, sewer, broadband, and sewer includes storm sewer in this case. We got some advice from many professionals in the business, from, um, our congressional delegation, and also from CCM and OPM, and the key advice to how we structured the program is not to fund something that's already gotten considerable revenue from other COVID programs, not to fund something that, um, where we wouldn't be able to fund it enough to make an impact, and they also advised us, uh, to think about equity in the existing programs for COVID, who was left out, and leverage funding to attract available additional financing opportunities such as matching funds for other grant opportunities. So, you'll see when we get to the spreadsheet, there's a discretionary side and an authorized side. Authorized is something that's delineated in actual words in the law, and the discretionary side falls under what we call revenue loss, and that's where the guidelines for spending are the most liberal, for local interpretation, and, um, and that's where we find some of our programs that aren't specifically mentioned in the authorizing statute. The timeframe for eligible costs that we could use this for is from March third, twenty-one, all the way to December thirty-first, twenty-four. So, we have to commit all of the funds by the twenty-fourth. We have to cut, uh, just by two oh two four, and we actually have to cut all the checks and pay all bills by twelve thirty-one, twenty-six. Uh, recipients can use funds to, we're the recipient, so we can use these funds for households, businesses, nonprofits, and individuals, all the way back to March third, two thousand and twenty-one, and this is a use it or lose it. If we don't consume the funds and expend them by these dates, uh, we give the money back. So, the guidelines from the federal government are, um, to be concerned with expediency. They want us to get this money out into the community as, as quickly as we can, but we must use best purchasing and accounting practices in managing these funds. We have to prioritize ensuring that qualified, skilled, and appropriately-trained personnel are overseeing these awards. We're not gonna streamline any regulations. We have, um, carefully thought through our purchasing regulations and our flow charts on how things will get approved and paid, and we're gonna stick to, uh, our local ordinance for that. So, we, as I was just saying, balancing a need for expediency with the risk of fraud, ensuring that resources go to evidence-based programs whenever possible, and regularly communicating with and encouraging coordination among state and local governments. So, we've, we've looked at trying to do something in, with more regional impact, but seems that everybody just wants to stick with their local. So, we're gonna create written policies and procedures, written standards of conduct, risk-based due diligence, risk-based compliance monitoring, and, of course, we're gonna record and maintain, uh, everything that we do for future audit. So, audits are possible on this program up to year two thousand and thirty-one. So, in the grant world, somebody says, here's a program, tell us how you would use our money. I write a story in a budget, and I hand it to them, and they say yes, and then as I spend that money, I have to document that I follow the rules and apply for the money for reimbursement. In this program, they hand you the money. They don't hand you any rules. They hand you a very loose guide, and then they say behave. So, it's very important that we have, um, not only professional and, um, on Mr. Jackson's side, financial review of the rules and regulations, but also an attorney reviewing everything we do to be sure that we're complying with the law, and we need to do that and maintain those records to defend future me's and, and, uh, future Mayors and future councils against any clawback that the government might, might impose on us. Reporting has to be done quarterly, and this is a short list of what they want to include in the reports. So, we started this process with public input. We opened up an online platform. We had a hundred and six people respond online. Uh, the council held two public hearings where staff was there, and we took notes of comments from the public. We did a town hall, which was here, and also online with the Mayor, and we've had other unsolicited communications, uh, from the council and from the public that we coalesced, and this is a rough idea of how that, um, input on what to spend the money on looks like. So, you can see down the bottom, public health outreach was a large item, broadband infrastructure, and so moving up the list. So, the expenditure categories overview that are written into the law, public health, negative economic impacts, services that disproportionately impacted communities, infrastructure, revenue replacement, and administrative expenses for this program. So, this was the Mayor's budget, which you have seen, uh, come out for the ARPA plan. It's kinda hard to read these numbers, but on the left-hand side of that, you'll see a category, and that ties out directly to the manual for ARPA, where it tells us exactly how we qualify this proposed expenditure under the law. And we would ask that if there are any changes or additions, that, uh, at some point, we'd be consulted on staff level so we can identify, uh, where in the law, which are proposing would be authorized. The next column over describes the project, and then the first financial column is discretionary. So, that's ten thousand dollars for the city. The Mayor has opted to take the guaranteed amount of ten thou- uh, ten million, excuse me, ten million, and, uh, and not try to make an argument. We could argue that our losses were higher, but it's subject to interpretation, so let's just take any risk out. We're gonna accept the ten million offer as an agreed amount, uh, under the law. And then the balance of the funds are what we call the qualified. So, qualified, we had to find something specific in the law that mentions that, that activity. Ones we couldn't find under qualified, we had to put in a discretionary column. And when you're adjusting or balancing this, we need to keep that in mind. Before you make any votes, we, we really need to vet what column it belongs in, if there's sufficient funds. So, starting with our first program was a Housing Crisis Center Fund. There were, um, a couple of dozen suggestions on the table of what to do about housing crisis, and the, the Mayor has settled on a program that would purchase a specific property or properties. This would ensure that the asset of a million dollars stays under our control. Um, she has no intentions going into the homeless shelter service business, but there are a number of nonprofits who do this, and they're self-funding through, through grants. So, the idea is that we would just own the physical plant and turn it over to a nonprofit to operate, under a contract, and that way, if the nonprofit is not performing, we'd be able to take the asset back, preserve the million dollars we invested, and find a new operator. So, it would not be a city-managed facility. We would contract with a five oh one C three organization, and we had expected we would be involved in helping them to fundraise. Food Bank Support Fund, this is a, a fund that we are inviting the local food groups to make proposals to the city, and then we, out of that four hundred thousand, we would decide the merits of those proposals and, uh, give them the money. So, if they need a refrigerated truck, or they needed a walk-in cooler, or if they just needed to buy food, they thought that was the best use. Uh, perhaps it's a, an existing soup kitchen that needs to expand their kitchen or something like that. I mean, that's the type of programs we would expect them to propose. So, now we're into direct cash aid to small business. This is a program that was presented to the council before by other members of the staff. Uh, so this funds this program, and this, this is for landlords and tenants who couldn't come to agreement during COVID. Here's an opportunity to give them an incentive, and they have to, they have to earn it. You have to open, stay in business, and then you get a monthly discount on your rent for a certain period of time. You go out of business, the money stops. So, the, the idea is that we will choose a administration here in the building. We're thinking now it would be best in community development, but that could change, and people would make applications, and they would have to come in with paperwork to prove that they qualify for the program and prove that they've stayed in business for the, read them on time period. Program B is for the small businesses who were left out of the original round. Now, you think about all the delis that had to put in Plexiglas dividers out of their own pocket, um, you think about restaurants that were approved under the SBA funds, but then the SBA ran out of money, and a lot of people didn't get anything. You know, it's for people who had to convert to an online business or go into the delivery service business. So, if you are a small business and your gross receipts are less than five hundred thousand, and you can show that you're current with your taxes with the City of West Haven, and that you were in business during the COVID period, that you can come in and get a grant up to ten thousand dollars, um, to help you stay in business and recover from the effects of this. Program C, um, we had a program proposed to us in the middle of the pandemic that we couldn't put together because we didn't have matching funds at the time. So, this is something the Service Corps of Retired Executives does with the SBA, and Rex Development, our Scrugg Regional Economic Development Team, is a cosponsor for this program, and they would provide digital counseling to people who need to improve their online, um, profile, Facebook marketing, or, um, building a website, or trying to create an online menu for your pizza parlor, whatever that may be, and so this gives them one-on-one coaching time to, to accomplish that. This program is for, um, all of our neighborhood pocket parks and playgrounds, um, Hubbard Park, Sandy Point, Marginal Drive Bike Trail, has been mentioned a number of times. This is a pool of funds that would be available to city agencies and for affinity groups, like the people who manage Hubbard Park, and you would come to the, uh, administration with a proposal. This is what we wanna spend the money on, and we would ask that they come see me first. We would look for opportunities for matching grants, and we first wanna tap this million to help them get other grants. Uh, the Tree Warden and I have been working on a number of grant opportunities that we can't go for because they require fifty percent match. This opens up the field for him, and, uh, we're hoping that this will leverage it to get, get more money in for tree planting, as if, as an example. Once we've exhausted the possibility of, of, um, matching funds, this money would be available directly, uh, for those projects. So, the thought is that they would make application to the Commissioner of Public Works. He would vet the project, and we would consider all the funding opportunities and, um, begin to, uh, advance money towards these projects. Allentown Library Branch. So, a lot of consternation went into this one because of the timeline. In order for them to comply with the spending requirements, they'd have to have a project that was near shovel-ready. So, the way to get them closest to shovel-ready, in the Mayor's view, was to give them land behind Carrigan School so that they didn't have to spend money on land, and that would allow them to start the design process and get going, uh, with the money they have in the bank, a grant they have available to them, plus this funding. They're two-thirds of the way towards their goal. If they took this money and bought a piece of property, they're nowhere near their goal. They wouldn't be able to start the building in time. They wouldn't be able to use the money in time. We'd have to ask for it back. So, we're trying to enable them to do something rather than get into something they can't complete, and there's a lot of thought and discussion that goes into this, but this is essentially where it boils down to. Public Health Outreach scored very high on, uh, public input, and so the Health Department would like to expand its inoculation clinic that they stood up, uh, during COVID, and make that more of a permanent program to address, uh, the inequities in town. This would be a program where you could come to City Hall for regu- regular inoculation appointments, and also a traveling nurse who would come to your home. So, if for any reason you can't leave your home, they'll go to you to inoculate you in your home. They want to expand the program for diabetes, heart, and other health nutrition counseling opportunities, and provide a travel medicine clinic. Now, I have to confess that the first time they said travel medicine clinic, I thought, isn't that for rich people? And she said, no, not really. Remember, we had an Ebola scare here, and a lot of our community, uh, does travel home to different places around the world from time to time, and so what this travel medicine clinic does is it allows us to help those people get all the inoculations they need so that they can travel safely, and then also avert the idea that they would bring home diseases from these remote parts of the world. It's very difficult to get these inoculations. It's, it's quite an effort, especially if you don't speak English. So, this would be a, um, a way to give this community we have here an opportunity to go one place and get it at an affordable rate. That's what I just said. Imagine that. So, once the council commits the funds, the Health Director will develop a written business plan for the Mayor's approval. Uh, she's gonna look at hiring staff herself. She's gonna look at subbing it out to, um, a fairly qualified health center like the Omnia folks who run our school clinics, somebody like that. There's a number of opportunities out there for other nonprofits and for-profit health organizations that could do this for us on a contract basis. And I will work with her over the three years that this clinic is open to see if we can find a way to sustain it past this initial three-year budget. We put some money in here to spruce up the Health Department and give them a little more elbow room. They actually have an exam room that they've never used or haven't used in quite a while. Uh, so it's just a matter of getting some equipment, putty paint, and, um, waiting rooms and things where people can come in and enjoy the privacy that you'd expect in a medical facility. Community Mental Health Support, um, this was a big one on public input as well. As you know, we do a lot of partnering on the public side with our nonprofit partner, Bridges Healthcare. We've cosponsored some grants with them. They've taken over the, uh, drug and alcohol, um, uh, effort in, in West Haven. So, this gives them an additional hundred thousand to support that mission to what they've been doing, uh, to help people through the COVID era. Arts Center Construction Funding. So, as you know, in two thousand and eleven, twenty, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, the city started on a multimillion-dollar, uh, program to rebuild the, the Sonic Temple next door. We got as far as gutting it and putting a new roof on it, and then it stopped. So, we recently received, uh, one and a half million from the state to further that project, and that's still not enough to get us to the point where we could do something with the building. So, a couple of things we're thinking of. One, we got a stranded asset. We can't do anything with it. It's more money than we could ever come to this body and ask for in, in a bonding proposal, and we think that this is a good opportunity to support a very broad arts community, profit and nonprofit groups who could use, um, multipurpose space in that building to build their, their businesses, their clubs, their organizations, and, and pursue their, their arts activities. So, we're not envisioning at this point, the, the original program was, uh, in two thousand and eleven envisioned a big theater, but since we have the high school tricked out as a, that's their words, tricked out as a, uh, as a theater, uh, we don't see any point in, in replicating that at this point, and this funding wouldn't be sufficient to do that anyway. So, we're seeing a couple of multi-use rooms that can be used for, uh, activity space, rental halls, and classrooms, um, jazzercise, yoga, martial arts, that, that sort of a community space. And we see that many of the theater groups in the area, such as Long Wharf, um, New Haven Paint and Clay Club, they're all losing their homes because they're too expensive for arts groups to maintain. So, we're hoping to attract groups like that that can bring programs to us, uh, and put on their, their events in, uh, our facilities here in West Haven, either at the Arts Center or the, or the high school. So, by putting ourselves on the arts map, um, we hope that we can build that enthusiasm. What we're gonna do with this money is get to the point where we have an elevator, plumbing, bathrooms, sheet rock, carpet, and that'll give us a usable building. We'll continue to fundraise, uh, for all the accoutrements that would make it a nice arts center. And we wanna tie this into downtown. We hope to see this as a catalyst. We clean up the campus around the area, uh, include the Sculpture Garden so that it walks out onto Campbell Avenue, ties into downtown business. And, um, we're leveraging the one and a half million in state grant funds with this contribution to actually get to a usable facility. Municipal Building Improvements, Johnson Senior Center, um, the seniors made it clear that they really need to get, uh, get past the nineteen-sixties orange countertop. So, uh, we, we intend on refurbishing the space they're in or another floor in that building. Uh, obviously, there needs to be quite a bit of programming work that would include the seniors, um, but obviously, the Johnson Senior Center was built, as the seniors have told us, at a different time for a different age, a different mobility group, and their current needs don't fit the way the center was built. So, this money hopefully will get them to the point where it's a usable, uh, building. Uh, the Child Development Center needs a new roof, um, something we keep kicking the can down the road because of budget reasons, but now we have a solar system planned for that roof, and we need to change the air conditioners up there soon because they're edging up on the twenty-year-old mark. Uh, that's a, a lot of heating and cooling that we pay for, that there, it's included in the rent for the childcare center, so it will save us quite a bit of money to triple the insulation on the roof and add the solar system to knock our electric bill back. So, this, this enables us to do the solar system and replace the air conditioners. City Hall Windows, as you know, uh, well, I, maybe you don't know, so I'll tell you. Some of these windows don't stay up, and they're extremely heavy, and they can come crashing down and threaten your fingers. Uh, some of them can't be locked. Some of them don't open at all. Uh, they leak air very badly, and you'll, you'll walk around City Hall and see scotch tape all around the windows, trying to keep the air out, and they're, uh, a big drain on our, our heating and cooling. Other proposals in the past have just been out of budgetary reach for normal maintenance, so this is an opportunity to address that. We would do it with an architect to be sure we're preserving the architectural character of the building. As you know, anything to do with oil has been skyrocketing in price, and there was a come-to spreadsheet moment last July where our paving contractor told us that, beware next year, all the Biden money coming through, there's gonna be a huge state demand on paving services. So, don't expect us to do what we normally do for you in twenty-two. Plus, the rising cost of tar sands oil from Canada, which is what supplies the asphalt industry, um, we were looking at, uh, major paving costs, and since we level our paving projection cost every year, it just meant we were gonna pay them a whole lot less in twenty-two. We just weren't gonna get as far for the dollar. So, wisely, looking at that chart towards the end, you see twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-one, it's now higher than that. That's the cost of the raw ingredients for asphalt. So, we did its own advanced paving last year, and so this money helps to backfill that so we don't have to borrow at all. Aid to Fire Districts, um, as you know, our, our three first responder districts here, bore the brunt of the pandemic response and, um, bore the brunt of putting themselves at risk, so we are appreciative of their efforts, and after long talks with all three of the fire chiefs and, and their boards, uh, we came up with this plan that immediately we will seek to install UV air filtration, uh, for indoor air quality in the bunk rooms. And then we're gonna give each district an even million, uh, to use towards infrastructure projects. So, Allentown will use it towards the, their planned building, Sewell Center, and Westshore will use it to create, um, sleeping rooms so that they can also hire female firefighters. Uh, stormwater management is one of those items that's specifically mentioned in the law, so this is what we call a qualified expenditure, and as you know, we have underpasses here that have killed people, getting caught in their cars. Uh, we have ambulances that can't get across town except for one route. getting caught in their cars. We have ambulances that can't get across town except for one route in significant rainstorms, and it doesn't take much. It's like an inch of rain within an hour, and our underpasses are not safe to travel through. As you know, many of the residents, it seems every public meeting we go to these days, there's somebody there to speak about stormwater infrastructure. Now, our stormwater system was built for rainfalls in the 50s and 60s. That's when a lot of it was designed. Our rainfalls now are way more, like nine inches more expected rainfall within that certain time period as we would have designed for in the 50s and 60s. So our infrastructure is grossly out of date. And as you know, the administration has never, any administration has never been able to come and ask for millions of dollars of stormwater. We asked for $275,000 or $500,000 just to keep up with the basic maintenance and repair. So here's a rare opportunity for us to take on some of these bigger issues, to map out our problems, to start planning for major infrastructure improvements. So we're asking to put $3 million towards that effort. This will include a feasibility study. There's additional grant money coming out from CIRCA in August that will augment that study, and it would give us initial capitalization fund of $1 million so that year over year, we can do some level spending on stormwater infrastructure in years you're not able to fund it. And we can look towards building a stormwater authority as that authority and legislation is now available to us. This money also includes a VAC truck that will be shared with the sewer authority, sewer commission, and this is something that they spend a lot of money hiring contractors to do, and it's something that we on the public works side don't have the capacity to do, to maintain our existing pipes and drains. So this will give us that capacity, and this will go a long way to fixing our existing infrastructure. This plan will also help us to comply with MS4 regulations where we're currently deficient and avoid any associated fines. We are setting aside 1.4 of that 3 million specifically for matching grants that we can leverage this to get more money in for these programs. Our next proposal is for a recycling and reuse center, and this project envisions doing away with curbside bulky waste collection. And this would give residents a permanent place to bring discarded items and unwanted items, but it also helps us be better stewards of the environment. We're not talking about a dump. We're talking about a professionally managed recycling and transfer station. And the idea is we would create a row of dumpsters where we separate things into the least-cost disposal method. So whatever it costs us the least to dispose of that item, that's how we want you to separate it. And by doing that, it takes our bulky waste disposal cost way down. As you know, from watching our budget, we spent more money per tonne on bulky waste than we had more tonnage than ever before. So the city's done what it can by going from four down to one and then back to two times a year, but there's a point where we just have to stop throwing so much stuff out. And what this center would do for us is give us an ability to do a diversion. So we can divert things that can be recycled. We can divert things that can be reused, Goodwill Donation Center coordination and swap shops and other things that are proven in other municipalities to work. So we went up to visit the recycling center in Southington. They are the same-sized town we are. They only open on a Saturday. They get 700 cars every Saturday through there. I think we would probably have it open on weekdays as well. But it eliminates the blight piled up on the sidewalks. It eliminates the arguments. It eliminates the fines. We have to give people from putting their trash out too early. It gets rid of the mattresses that show up on, you know, trailheads and places like that. It gives us a permanent place to recycle mattresses, electronic e-waste, cardboard, construction demolition debris, small loads from homeowners, not contractor loads. And we're going to partner with somebody like Goodwill and Habitat for Humanity to divert things out of that waste stream. It can be a simple facility, as simple as just some dumpsters with covers above ground, or it could be something more elaborate. This is the overlay of a property we own on Helm Street that might serve that purpose. We're not sure that's the best location for it, but this gives you an aerial view of what that would look like. Running the center in the future, there's quite a bit of funding coming our way through opioid settlements. And our thought is that we can use this for job training funds and that running the recycling center would be a job training opportunity. We've had preliminary what-if conversations with the APP Foundation, and they were receptive to the idea, as I'm sure other nonprofits may be, as taking over and operating the recycling center for us, and we would fund that labor cost through those opioid settlements. Child pedestrian safety. This is a program that Ernie, our sidewalk supervisor, is passionate about. There are places around schools where the city sidewalks don't connect to the school, and he wants to make those continuous so that we have safe, manageable sidewalks from where the kids are walking to school, and they're not going out onto the roads or walking across mud or snow to get to school. So as you know, we spend quite a bit on sidewalks every year through low-CIP funding, but that's not enough to do new sidewalk expansions. That's just enough to keep up with repairs of existing. Broadband access was very difficult. You see that it scored high in public recommendation, but the problem with this is that even if we took the entire amount of money and applied it to a broadband project, we couldn't find anything that would, as they say, move the needle. We're talking millions of dollars needed to bring fiber optic into West Haven on that kind of a basis. But we did find one program that Colleen Bailey had at the library. She put this together last year but was unable to find funding for it. And this is a micro grant to the library where they will lend out hotspots or subsidize subscriptions to broadband service for income-qualified households. And in their initial survey, they had 74, just in the center district area, along 74 households that qualified. So by giving them this $100,000, they'll be able to provide two to three years' worth of these subscription hotspots. The city has a fiber optic loop that runs around the city that was built prior administrations, and we never used it. So there is an opportunity to liven that up. We see with our new traffic lights coming in a reason to have that up and running, and this is a municipal fiber optic loop that just runs from different points around the city. So this would give us a chance to actually turn that on and make it usable to us. And this is an enabling piece for the chief's request for some camera money for some of the hotspots in town that he would like to have cameras on. So I think he's talking about Spring Street and frequent dumping locations. He's talking about the boardwalk along the beach. We would need that broadband link to be able to turn all these cameras on that they want to install. Now, this is one where we do see money coming through the infrastructure bill that could make this a huge program for us. So we're leaving this on the table in case the infrastructure bill doesn't work out, but I think by August, we'll know whether we can divert this to another cause or not. First responder family relief fund. So aid to first responders, of course, was high in the public's opinion on what we should use the money for. So the first program would allow the families of our first responders to go home and add up all the bills that they incurred when they were on quarantine or called into work to backfill a shift, extra babysitter costs, extra home care costs for grandma, any of those unusual impacts to the household from having to respond to the COVID emergency. And they would submit these to us. We would give them a grant up to $1,000 per employee to help them reimburse the cost of those expenses. The second one would be a tutoring grant. So this is available to any city employee whose child missed school or their grades suffered, and they now need tutoring. Behavioral health counseling grant. This is to make sure that no one's fallen through the cracks. Most of us have access to an employee, Mayor, what's the name of that program? The Employee Employee Assistance EAP. Thank you. But some don't, and some of our family members don't. So anyone who was required to work through the COVID police, fire, ERS, DPW employees, if there's anybody in your family that was suffering because dad wasn't home, mom wasn't home, that there's a there's a fund available to make sure nobody's falling through. They'll help them with copays. As you know, mental health services are difficult to get through a lot of insurance plans, and they would have high deductibles. So this just gives them an opportunity to make sure that no one's fallen through the cracks. We're going to have to come up with a review board for the micro grants if the council agrees to it and apply HIPAA rules to it to keep the privacy of the families. Police personnel retention funding scored very high on the public input, and this will give us the ability to increase police officer pay by $10,000 a year for each sworn officer for at least two fiscal years. Painter Park Sports Field House. So they have a $5 million want. We didn't have $5 million, but what we can do is the first part of the building, we can do the bathrooms, we can do a pickleball court or a basketball court, and we can design a building that can be added on to later with additional fundraising. Sports Camp Micro Grants. This is a popular program that several people approached the mayor about, and this makes sure that everybody in town, regardless of their financial ability, has the chance to go to sports camp, buy a baseball bat or a glove to get there, pay for their doctor's appointments to get their inoculations for camp, whatever they need. So we'll set up a program that'll be income-qualified to help with the sports camp, and we added Chair Camp funding on there. As you know, developing muscles at that age is very important, and the coordination for the exercises they do is important for the growth of the people who participate. So we thought that was a good program of support. FEMA PA covers some of what we incurred in expenses during the COVID period, particularly renovations to the EOC in the basement. As you're aware, many of those programs are subject to audit, and they can push back and claw back money on them at will for a number of years. So we have that plus anything through SLFRF that went through the state OMB that might get disqualified. This contingency fund protects the taxpayer from undue budget issues, should any of those bills get rejected. If they were COVID-related and they got rejected from another COVID fund, this is a failsafe to pay them off. And as the public is demanding and as the law requires, we need specific expertise in managing these funds. So we've set aside three years' worth for legal and assistant in my office to help manage this paperwork and document what we're doing for future audits, and third-party legal and accounting oversight. And this is also to support the Citizen Review Committee in their function. So the Citizen Oversight Committee has been established by the mayor. This is a group that's very familiar with the way the city operates and what its priorities are, and it's also a group that's proven itself being able to share the checkbook, quote unquote. So we're looking forward to working with them in an advisory capacity. But this is how the approval flow chart is proposed. The beneficiary of this event would make an application. It would go to my office. We would review it for compliance review with the law. We would then send it to Corporation Council for legal review. We would then go to the mayor's office for approval. Where the charter requires it, it would come back before the council. It would go back to my office for implementation. We would then run it through the purchasing department for bidding. It would go to the Citizen Review Panel for final review, and then it would be implemented. In-house project approvals, such as the parks funds. As you approve this funding plan, it would then go to my office for program compliance review. It would go to the department head, such as Tom McCarthy for DPW. The Citizen Review Committee would look at it, and if it was infrastructure spending, they would be very involved in helping to manage that project. It would then go to our purchasing agent to be sure we're procuring correctly, and then we would assign a city project manager to oversee the project. Payment authorizations would start with the project manager. They would then bring it to their department head, whoever's running that department for whatever program they're in. It would come to my office for program compliance. Is this bill being submitted in compliance with the program? We'd go to the Citizen Review Committee, and once they have approved it, it would go through our accounts payable system. If it's over $5,000, it goes to the mayor's office. Then it goes back to the finance director for final approval and on to payment. Quarterly reporting flow chart would start with our grants office, the grants accounting team that would be in charge of managing these funds. It would go to me for program review. Go to Corporation Council for legal review. We would then bring it to the Citizen Review Committee. They would do a public posting. If they've approved it, it goes to the finance director, and it's his legal responsibility to upload to the Treasury. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Doug. Anybody got any questions?
Before we get into discussion, I think we're in a public hearing, right?
Yeah.
I personally would rather hear from the people out there so I can formulate better questions before I can ask. Does that sound all right with you?
All right with me. Does anybody want to come up and address the council? Leo?
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Leo Kelly. I have a home on Seaview Avenue, a lifelong resident here. I'm also the tree warden for the city of West Haven. And just to bring a quick point to the allocation of the monies that have been set aside for the neighborhood parks and gardens and trees. Our forest, urban forest here in town, has significantly matured over the years and needs daily attention, and yet this grant would be, these monies could be allocated to renew our forests, not for us personally right here, but for the community in about 20 or 30 years from now. The benefits of the trees actually can be tied into a lot of the commitments that we made of health and issues and storm drain runoff and things like that. So personally, I'd just like to let the council know that they could have on their future agendas the plan that I have, which would be to plant a minimum of 200 trees beginning each year for the next 10 years. And that would be a goal that would highly be dependent on a significant amount of money that could be allocated in that short little section of improvements that was mentioned by Doug, and that's the goal that I hope to obtain. And I just want you to know that there's a face to that request, and it's me, and I think the benefit will be to the future citizens of West Haven and not us here sitting now. And that's it. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harbeck?
Howie Horvath, 122 Wilson Ave here in West Haven. Forgive me, I was a little late, so I might have missed. Did anything get included or mentioned about small business aid? We did have, okay, I missed that. I apologize. Then the other two things I wanted to ask about is, we saw a couple of snapshots here of what is basically workflow that I think everybody agrees here is needed. I just would suggest you look into some electronic platforms that are going to make, I don't know how that's currently happening or might happen, but they're really very valuable, and it makes the process easy. There's a history available, and it should make the move to that kind of accountability, if you will, much easier. I don't particularly know anybody or any companies, but it's just something you want to look at. The other thing is, you know, every year, and we're getting ready to go into the budget, we take a real strong look at that, and typically, we look backwards. we take a real strong look at that, and typically we look backwards to see where we were and where we are. I'm very happy to see that we've made some tremendous progress. We've gotten some help to do it, and we needed that help. But I'd like to ask you to consider the idea of some forward-thinking models that show us not only just how we compared the last year or the last five years, but these things that we're doing now that are so very exciting and needed, what will that look like in a year, two years, five years? I mean, those are estimates and speculative, but I think it gives the community a sense that this is long-term thinking. This is not just short-term, patch it up and, you know, take the money and run. It's really thinking about how this impacts the city today, tomorrow, and into the future. So best of luck. I know you have your hands full both with this and with the budget, but I know you'll do a great job. Thank you.
Good evening. Eleanor Slamba, 18 Fourth Avenue. For these remarks in support of the capital investment in the Arts Center by way of rationale of why it makes sense as an investment. From coast to coast and from our smallest rural towns to our largest urban cities, America's nonprofit arts and cultural organizations make their communities more desirable places to live and work every day of the year. The arts provide inspiration and joy to residents, fortify mental health, beautify public spaces, and strengthen the social fabric of our communities. Arts and cultural organizations are also businesses. They employ people locally, purchase goods and services from other businesses, keep spending local, make communities more vibrant, and attract tourists. Event-related spending by arts audiences generates valuable revenue for local merchants such as restaurants and retail stores. Performing and visual arts organizations, festivals, public art programs, and municipally-owned art centers like the one under discussion pump dollars into the nation's economy, support jobs, provide households with much-needed income, and generate government revenue. What's more, the arts, unlike most industries, leverage significant amounts of event-related spending by their audiences. For example, part of the arts experience may include dining out, shopping in local retail stores, enjoying dessert after the show, and returning home to pay the babysitter. Based on an audience survey conducted by Americans for the Arts, the typical arts attendee spends $31 per person per event beyond the cost of admission. When a community attracts non-local arts attendees and cultural tourists, it harnesses additional significant economic rewards. 34% of attendees in that study I was discussing traveled from outside their county or zip code. Those non-local attendees spend twice as much per person as their local counterparts as a result of attending an arts event. In this survey, non-local attendees were asked about the purpose of their event, of their visit, and more than two-thirds indicated that the primary purpose of their visit was specifically to attend this arts event, demonstrating the power of the arts to attract visitors to the community. Local attendees were asked what they would have done if that art event were not taking place, and 41% of those said that they would have traveled to a different community to attend a similar cultural event. Therefore, if a community fails to provide a variety of artistic and cultural experiences, not only will it fail to attract new dollars from cultural tourists, it will also lose all of that discretionary spending of its own residents who will travel elsewhere for a similar arts experience. This data puts to rest a misconception that communities that support arts and culture do so at the expense of local economic development. In fact, communities are investing in an industry that supports jobs, generates revenue, and is a cornerstone of tourism. The arts do mean business, and I hope that West Haven will take advantage of the opportunity to bring that business here. Even if you accept that all that is true, why use ARPA funds in particular to make this happen? Here are a few reasons. The use of federal funds mandates the broadest notion of public access. There might be some measure of success raising private donations over a longer period of time to make this renovation happen, but that would incur whatever strings attached to those private donations, whereas federal funds mandate the broadest possible notion of who this building and these services and programs are for, and that sends the right signal, in my opinion, that it's really for the whole entire community. Number two, because our community, which now includes so many new residents who have just moved to town, needs that front door to knock on, an arts center becomes a welcome center of sorts, providing information not only on various programs and classes, but a host of other services and attractions, helping ground new residents into the community to integrate into our neighborhoods that much sooner. Number three, cultural assets are already here in this community to make the center not a standalone destination or about the building itself, but part of a vibrant ecosystem. There are theaters in need of different kinds of space, and other groups revealed in the Cultural Assets Mapping Project who have said that they would take advantage of the possibilities of the center being in existence to grow their programs and possibly even hire new people and creating jobs. Number four, arts, culture, and tourism was part of the language in the original ARPA bill. It was named as an industry that was one of the hardest hit by COVID, so it is a legitimate use of these funds. If West Haven's going to be highly scrutinized over its COVID spending, and of course it will and arguably should be, directing these dollars for this purpose is like releasing the bowling ball right down the center of the lane to hit a strike. It will not only support community mental health for all ages and demographics, especially the most vulnerable, including seniors, young adults, refugees, and other groups. It will stand up to any possible conceivable test of dollars for ARPA. It was because it was named in the original bill. Number five, arts and culture is not just paintings on the wall. It's really not. It is a community coming together to be creative, solve problems, celebrate heritage and traditions. I want us to be able to do this at 304 Center Street in the near future. However, it is happening. And Envision, Arts West CT, the organization that is forming itself to make this happen sooner, extends this invitation. Envision with us an arts haven where members of West Haven's diverse community can come together to share their talents, stories, unique expressions, and experiences. I really hope that we can see the Center for Creative Expression and Performance by and for the West Haven community flourish, and I know that you all will be proud of what we've been able to accomplish together with this funding. Thank you.
Hi. Robin Parsons, 129 Bellevue. I also missed the beginning. I'm sorry. I thought it was starting at 6:30, not at 6:00. So I'm not sure if Doug mentioned anything about effective service delivery. I'm here to repeat my refrain, which is, all of the things that have been proposed are worthy. I don't think anybody can really criticize any of the projects that have been suggested. But it's my opinion that the problem in West Haven isn't that we don't have good ideas, it's that we don't have effective systems and procedures for making sure what we say is going to happen actually does happen. And this trips us up over and over and over again. I see you smiling at me. But I will give you a very simple example, which I don't want to blow up, and so it's really the most important thing in the world, but to me, it is a clear example of the kind of thing that happens here, and I'm aware of it because Ron Walters and I have taken over planting, the planters along the boardwalk with perennials, so the city does not have to pay to have new flowers and water and all of that stuff put in there. So we've spent some time on the boardwalk recently, and of course, it is literally paved with cigarette butts, absolutely paved. They're in the planters, they're in the sidewalks, they're everywhere. And this is the kind of thing that happens here. Way back when I was doing the Sustainable CT thing, one of the goals that we committed to do was to pass or to establish a no-smoking policy in city parks and recreation areas. And in fact, in 2019, the Parks Department adopted a no-smoking policy governing all public spaces, including the beaches and the boardwalks. In July of 2019, Beth Sabo committed to having no-smoking stencils applied to the existing regulatory signs. All of those signs are standing proud these days. A lot of them had fallen down, but the signs are all up, which is a great thing, but there are no stencils on them. There is no way that anybody visiting a West Haven beach would know that there's no smoking there. In October of 2019, she said that they were going to be put on. In 2020, they weren't there. In April 2020, former councilperson Finelli was going to check on what happened. In May of 2020, I gave my Sustainable CT annual report to the city council and mentioned there were no signs. Almost three years after the policy was adopted, there are still no stencils on those signs. Okay, this is, again, not that this isn't the most important thing facing the city, but this is representative, that there is no system of accountability. And you can have so many presents under the Christmas tree, which look wonderful, sound wonderful, and are wonderful, but unless you establish some sort of system, it's a waste. People in West Haven typically don't accuse you of not having their best interests at heart. They accuse you of not effectively delivering services. And the only way you're going to effectively deliver services is if you have some sort of system of accountability. Now, I was not in favor of a city manager system. I was in favor of retaining the strong mayor system, but we need to have somebody, I don't care if you call it an operations manager, a compliance person, or somebody who is responsible for making sure that what is said is going to happen is going to happen, and gives you reports on it, because otherwise, it's just the same old, same old. So, as I understand it, under effective service delivery, you can spend money on better communications, data tracking, even hiring people in order to keep track of these things. So I strongly urge you to consider that. I don't know if it was part of the recommendations, but I didn't see it when I looked over the document that was posted online. I guess that's it. Thank you very much.
Fatima Eldoot, 62 30th Street, West Haven. I am also a member of a group called Sisters in Diaspora. This group is a group of immigrants and women, refugees who are struggling and face a lot of challenges during the pandemic especially. We are seeing the proposal of the mayor. We are here for the housing, which is, wants the mayor to make it her priority. The mayor is proposing to spend just $1 million on emergency housing, and this does not fulfill the need of West Haven residents that we are looking for. The American Rescue Plan is to relieve the effect of the pandemic. One of the biggest effects of the pandemic on lives of working people in West Haven is that it makes extremely difficult for us to pay rent and keep, especially after many of us lost their job and/or their work hours cut, and some lost their loved one for this COVID. We have an opportunity now with this money to help many, many working-class families in West Haven to relieve the huge pressure they feel every month just to keep a roof over their heads. Please ask a representative to make this priority and help those communities. And this is, we are, this is our basic needs. Housing need to be bigger priority in this budget because it is the basic necessity of a human life, and many, many of us are really struggling just to keep that, no matter how hard we are work. For this reason, we believe a significant amount of this money should go providing rental leave to West Haven family. Thank you for hearing, for listening to us.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and address the council?
Hello, Mayor Rossi and members of the city council. I'm Katherine Bushman. I'm the Assistant Director at the West Haven Public Library. Colleen Bailey, who's the director there, could not make it tonight, so I'm here to speak instead. Thank you very much, Mayor Rossi, for recognizing and supporting the library's request for the budget next year. We ask that the city council also support this budget when the library director stands before you next month. We ask that these ARPA funds can be used towards building a library on any land, be it on Kerrigan School Complex, as was proposed, or on any other appropriate land in Allington, be it city-owned or purchased by the Village Improvement Association. The ARPA funds also specify that it would support the development of the library branch and community center. That's the wording. The West Haven Library has never used the term "community center" in its name, so we're asking for a further definition as to what your expectations are for the library other than what has historically and currently been offered to the city of West Haven. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to address the council? For the second time, would anybody else like to come up and address the council? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Camila, 177 Chestnut Street, New Haven. And I just want to add something. I'm also a member of the Sisters in Diaspora, and I just want to add, you know, I know that it was mentioned several times that this proposal was compiled based on public outreach, and so I think that the premise that this is really capturing the main priorities of West Haven residents is, it's not accurate to portray it that way, even though I'm sure, I believe that there was an effort to reach out to the public. But, you know, we work with a group of many, many residents of West Haven who are connected to a community that extends hundreds of people, and nobody had heard of any of the meetings to bring together, to hear the public's priorities. And so, you know, I think that that should be taken into account, and our group respectfully had reached out to the mayor three times since October of last year and invited her to have meetings with us to hear our group's priorities. And we wanted to sit down in person because it's such a large community that we work with, but we weren't able to do that. And so, I just wanted to mention that before, you know, voting on this proposal, because as we've come to say several times, housing is the biggest, the deepest priority for every single person that we work with. And again, that, I think, represents the needs of thousands of people. As we mentioned a few meetings ago, a report by an organization called Data Haven stated that the average family in West Haven is $13,000 short of, in their salary, of affording a two-bedroom apartment, and that's based on data from, you know, outside of anyone's personal testimony. So, just wanted to mention that about the system of public outreach that is the premise of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to come up and address the council? Second time, would anybody else like to come up and address the council? Second time, would anybody else like to come up and address the council? During the last time, anybody else like to come up and address the council? That said, public session is closed. Um, one more thing, Mr. Jackson, would you have anything to say tonight about this uh program?
Notwithstanding the uh remarks of the uh, of the last speaker, this program was developed uh in, in a fashion in which, in my professional opinion, intended to be as robust and as transparent as possible. Obviously, uh because there are folks in this room here who uh did not feel like they had the opportunity to participate. That is something that we all have to address um as, as administration officials, as council members, et cetera. But uh I, I do think that uh uh as, as the, the last speaker said, the intent was clearly there. Did, you know. And I think that the, the representation of the programs uh are truly reflective of uh what was presented to the council members and to the mayor, uh and through the um, uh through the website as a, as a fair representation of what the stakeholders wanted to see. This use of funding. So um I am, I am, I am prepared to support it. I am also prepared to um help look at the processes by which it was developed to see what and where may have been missed in the process. But I do think that uh the, the program as developed uh by the mayor, by the team, with the support of the uh, of the council, uh reflects the information that was delivered for how these ARPA funds should be spent.
Thank you. Yes.
You can sit here. Good evening, everyone. Um, I know part of the group went outside with the councilman, uh Ron Pagliani. Um, I do want to address this because it, it's been said before. I was actually contacted by Dorinda Bor, and that is how I got any information. And it was very close to the end, and I wrote back in an email that said, "Look, you, you need to just give me some information about your group, write to me, give me something, so then I will, you know, try my best to put it in the plan." I never received any response. So um again, I did my absolute best to go out to people. We have had several, many public forums. It's impossible to reach everyone, and that's why now, council, as I said, there's still opportunity. I don't want to speak for the council members because I had my time, and now this is theirs. But I don't want anyone to think that we, we just neglected it. We needed something, you need some kind of basis in order to put it into here. I can't just say, "Well, we want a significant amount of the money." There has to be, I don't know if you're a five oh one C three, I don't know anything at all like that. But I did reach out, and I did never, I did not ever receive any written responses, even a few lines as to what you were hoping to accomplish. Because had I received anything, I would have put some amount of money in there for it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, it's closed now. Oh, for a German. Okay, Communication G from March fourteenth Agenda in regards to the expenditures of the ARPA funds uh will be held due to the council. I'm making, we're going over this whole plan. We will set up meetings to go through this, and uh we'll work around the budget meetings. The um, I, I didn't hear you.
Just repeat what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry. You gotta hold it, right? What do you think? No.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a process question? If you don't mind?
Go ahead.
Is it the right time?
Yeah, I was gonna say Kathy, she didn't give me the answer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I didn't hear the first part of what you said.
What we're gonna do is we're gonna, Communication G, we're gonna be holding. Due to, we're gonna have, go over this here on our meetings and trash it out and decide how we're gonna proceed with these funds. Because it's our time to look through it and make adjustments, adjustments to the funds as a group, as thirteen council people. And we'll do it in meetings that'll go around the budget meetings. Okay, we're gonna, we got a budget coming up too, so we're gonna have to take care of that also. So we will, I will make meetings after we find out when the uh finance director, finance chair does her budget meetings.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, no, I didn't realize you, you were still asking the question.
All set? Is that all set?
Yeah.
Yes.
No, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I, I agree with that. I think it would be, you know, process-wise, I think it would, it would make a lot of sense if we, if we take this in, in, in pieces. So if we, if we know ahead of time you're gonna call a meeting and it's gonna be on, you know, we're gonna discuss, you know, I'll, I'll pick two randomly, public health outreach and Allington Library, and then we could, we could, we could prepare for that, have information on that, and, and call the necessary people to ask them questions, and then, and then vote on those at that, at that meeting. I think that's a good way for us to be able to work through the planning, because I think it's a lot to digest all at once. I mean, oh, no, I think it's a good, I, I think it's a good plan. I, I just, like I said, I think everybody, I think, I'd like more details on some things, so.
I agree. I agree from doing that. Yes.
So are we not asking questions like we said we could from earlier? Because I have questions.
Yeah, you may. I, I asked if anybody had questions.
Right, but I thought we had to do public session first.
Well, yeah, we did.
So I have questions, I don't, that I need clarification on. So Doug, I am still waiting for um the submissions that were given to the city by the residents that you advertised. So when can I expect them? When can the city council? Because...
So the, the mayor asked that we withhold everything until we had a formal plan to present. So I would ask her tomorrow morning if I can release them.
Okay. And um I, I want to recognize the group um that's here, and I want this council to recognize that, you know, as the mayor stated, you can't reach everybody. However, we need to figure out how to reach everybody. Like there has, that is my biggest fear with this ARPA plan, that how are we gonna get out and talk to the people that we've not talked to before? I didn't want to interrupt, did you? Okay. I wanna, I, I, we, we have to figure it out. And, and I say this because we have people in this community that don't know where to go when they are having food insecurities. They don't know where to go. So that is on us. So when I look at this, I think about the marketing plan and I'm gonna say, what I'm, you talk about C D A. C D A will tell you. I think in the last four years that I've been on the city council, the people that have applied to their grant are the same people that get the funding year after year after year after year. They've had one new person. Whose fault is that? It's, it, we've got to do better. And I am pleading that we do better. Because there are children that are gonna go to sleep at night in this city that probably haven't eaten since they've been in, at school the day before. I mean, the, the, early in the day, at lunch. And then in the weekends, those kids will come home and they have food insecurity. Whereas we might have people in this city, and, and I don't know what the program's gonna be, but they don't know how they're gonna pay their rent. And do I have that insecurity? No, I don't. Was I raised in a home with that type of insecurity? Yes, I was. And it is frightening. And I also want to point out to my city council that when you get this plan, it is extremely because you, I'm very vocal about my opinions, Councilman Bruno, correct?
Correct.
That I found it very concerning that when we looked at the quarterly flow chart, the city council was never mentioned. And I think to myself, how dare somebody create a flow chart and not think that when all those, that information is being shared, there wasn't a box with our name in it? That's a problem. And then um when we are, we, we literally on one of the pages was brought up that we would actually be told when and if the charter states that we should be brought in. Really? And that, my friends and colleagues, is my problem. Because we can, it, it all gets sidestepped, right? Well, and it, but then when the, when the, when the um, the public comes in, we're the ones that get yelled at. Like, why did you let that happen? Why did you let that happen? The excuse can't be, "Oh, well, we weren't on the flow chart." But we are on the flow chart, and we're only gonna be told when it's in the charter. I have a problem with that, so I don't know what we need to do, but that is unacceptable to me. I want to be very involved in the process. I have opinions, as I'm sure, as does my colleague to the left and right. And I just, I can't even believe that's that, and, and I'm sure it wasn't your intent, Doug, and, and you, you know, I don't really know. But um there's, um, I don't know, am I done with my, do I have more time? We're supposed to have a fund manager, and no money is supposed to be spent until we have a fund manager. And I know a lot of people think that the city council broke their own resolution, but I want to say for the record, no, we didn't. Because just because we approved the um West Haven Police Department to have their raise, we did not approve the funding for that raise. We have different options, as the mayor eloquently explained um, um last week on how that would happen. So until there's a fund manager, we, no money can be spent. We have a resolution, so there needs to be a lawyer, a fund manager, and an A and E. And that's really all that I have right now, but that's all I have. I find that very discouraging. I don't know if you picked that up, but I did.
You did too.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Anybody else got something? Well, I gotta say something. I agree with you one hundred percent, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hosky. We did make it, nothing is to be spent unless we have all three people. Uh, I was told that the ARPA piece went out for these individuals. Corporation Council just informed me today that they do have a, an attorney, so that's one down, we got two more to go. So we could work on this, but we're not gonna say, yes, go ahead and head, go ahead, go, do this and do that, until we find out that we have all three people in place. We could still work on this to save time, to get it moving, but we're not gonna let it, release it.
Oh, I know we can't, because I, I will literally...
We won't, we won't do that.
Can I ask who the city project manager is? I thought it's one of their question. It was, do we, are we hiring a city project manager? Or are you, when, when that came up, Doug, is that similar to like Ernie's gonna oversee the sidewalks? Like each project might get assigned to somebody?
Yes, yes, each project would get assigned to somebody. I think the default is Tom McCarthy, and then he, we would find people. So if there's something going on at Sandy Point, perhaps it's one of the volunteers that manages Sandy Point would be that project manager. Just help keep the communication flowing.
I'm just tracking how many jobs are in this ARPA plan, and that wasn't here, so I just wanted to...
Three, so far.
There's more jobs in there than that.
We're proposing at the current time, um legal, accounting, and administrative.
Right, but there's a physician, three part-time nurses, an engineer. So I needed to know if the project manager was in addition to. I think we're not talking about the same jobs.
Right, so the health, health director would be the project manager for that particular...
No, 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 no. I, I, I'm just saying, I was wondering if we're hiring a project manager, as Robin said, Mrs. Parsons said, uh, uh, somebody overseeing it. And that's what I was just referring to. Was there going to be somebody, or it's just just assigned? Like, maybe Councilman Bruno's gonna do...
Gonna be somebody.
Yeah. Whatever. That was my question. Thank you.
So the, the piece about the council, um, we asked legal what the role is, and they said just defer to the charter, and so that's what we put in, where required by charter, because we don't really know. And I'm sure you can edit it and make it what you want.
What did you say? Um, I just, I, I'll go back to some of the things that I've said at past council meetings that just because something has always been one way doesn't mean that it should continue that way. And this council is very hands-on, and um we are held accountable for choices that other people make, and I, I can't continue to do business that way.
Sure. But you have the option to redraw that chart as you...
Oh, no, I know. I, I'm just stating my opinion on the chart that was there.
Mr. Chairman, sorry. Um, can you, can you share the name of the attorney that has been?
I didn't hear what you said.
Can you share the name of the attorney that you've retained?
He just said attorney was hired, he's gonna come forward with that. There's, there's two other people gonna be hired.
Yeah, just, um, I don't know who the question's for, maybe Doug. So, so Doug, on, on your charter discretionary and qualified, at the end of the day, the, the mayor's recommendation for projects is a little north of twenty-five million, twenty-five four ninety. Here.
Yeah.
Which leaves a balance of three point five million. Now, I understand we need a, a little bit of a contingency, but it appears to me that there's money left over should the council feel worthy to increase some projects or add some projects. Is that, is that, is that accurate?
That, that's accurate. We would also bear in mind that new variant popping up, COVID isn't over, we have unknown unknowns. And um the mayor wanted to keep some reserve in case we're standing up some other thing we don't even know exists yet. But bear in mind that we do have to expend by twenty-four. Government does move slowly, so if we're gonna fund something, it may take a year to get it going, and a year to finish it, and a year to pay for it, so. Sometime in the next twelve months, you need to make a decision on the funds.
And would we add dates for these projects? Like, you know, we, we have one, we, we've gotten, you know, a batch of money now, we're gonna get a batch of money maybe later this, you know, you know, June or whenever, July it comes in. Do we, do we prioritize the projects? Like, we want, you know, as we approve these projects, you know, is it, we rec, you know, are, are we just approving the project? If we do our due diligence and say, "Hey, listen, this project, we want to move on this," how do you prioritize the project? Or there's only, I, I would imagine there's only so many, you only have so much bandwidth to, to be able to, to do these projects. Do you have, does the city have a priority list on what they want to implement first?
So the mayor and I had this discussion um about one o'clock today. And so we have fourteen some odd million, I think the exact amount is on your chart at the bottom, in the bank now. The second amount is promised us this summer. All cards on the table, Congress did threaten to take it away a month ago. The second tranche. So it's wise to think that that may not, even though we're told by our congressional delegation it's highly, highly unlikely that they're gonna take it away. Yet, it's not in our bank account. So it would be wise to have that in mind. And we do have a chart that we started to work on, but the mayor hasn't vetted it to release to you. But it's just our suggestion what you might prioritize. Obviously, Police Department retention was number... Obviously, Police Department retention was number one on that list in the first tranche.
No, that'd be helpful. So you're, so there'll be a, a kind of a, what you, what the city feels of the priorities should be, um, going forward.
And we're doing that as a framework for your discussion. Yes.
Okay.
So I think that that needs some refining and thought on our end before we release that. But yeah, uh, I, at the worst, the worst thing that could happen is something happened to the second tranche and it never materialized. So that means you need to spend the first tranche you have in the bank now wisely. Because, so anything that, it's not real priority for the community really needs to be in the second tranche. Now, some of these projects, like the Art Center, are gonna take six months to design. So we could authorize the Art Center to proceed with design using state funds and money we already have in the bank for that project. And then we wouldn't be expending money on it until after we know we have the second tranche, but at least the design work would be done. So I mean, there's, there's ways that we can manipulate this to our, to your benefit.
And our approvals could have those contingencies in them when we make the approvals of the projects, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, you could say, I approve this, but I want it to be in the second tranche. I think that's wise.
That's awful. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug, I have one question for, let me understand something. In this plan, we could break it down. We don't have to vote on this whole plan. We could do each individual one, right?
If you choose to, sure.
We could do each individual one, and then if you give us that, what's the priority? We could work from that.
Yes. The only thing I would ask is, before you make a final vote, if there's anything new added, that you give me a chance to vet it against the law to be sure it's a qualified expense and which column it goes in. If it's discretionary, you're limited to that ten million.
Okay. That's good. Yes, ma'am.
Does the city have a standard process for, um, for determining who will be responsible for carrying out the project? So I noticed that in some of these things, there's construction mentioned. And is there a process to put things out to bid for who will do that construction? Or is it just kind of up to us to decide who does that? What will that process look like?
I'm glad you brought that up, and, and I feel very strongly about this. And I, I was gonna speak for myself. Charter gives us roles. I have a role in the charter. It's called the Grants and Aid. Makes me responsible for the management of all funds that come from the state, federal government, and all grants. And even though you want to hire a fund manager, the charter says that ultimately I'm responsible. So I have a role in this. Will I do the day today? I don't have time. Obviously, we need support. So that position needs to interface with, with my office to be sure that I'm fulfilling my obligations under the charter. The charter is like our constitution. And we can't undo it with administrative function or by legislation here. It is what it is. Charter has to prevail. Uh, it gives roles to, um, the Finance Director. We can't take that role away from him. He has to be involved. It gives a role to the Purchasing Director to enforce those requirements under the charter and the ordinances to support that, that job. So there is a function for all of us in city government to follow the normal path. And we know what happens when we get outside the normal path. So, uh, we see this additional staff coming in as support and oversight. That's what we see it as. But I still have a job, he still has a job, the mayor has a job, Corporation Council still has a job. We all have a process here to do. I hope that helps.
In follow-up to that, um, who, because ultimately there has to be accountability, right?
Yes.
So if those folks are appointed to oversee this work, but you're the one that's getting paid to do it, where does the accountability rest? I guess that's the, the...
Well, there, in, in any organization, there needs to be a chain of command, and I'm gonna defer to the Finance Director.
Okay.
Everything that advances must have a series of professional attestations to it. That's the way that I, I look at it. And so, uh, one of the things that, um, will happen is someone will get paid for a project in this, right? You know, they'll get paid for trees, they'll get paid for something. I do not intend to put the name that my father gave me on a piece of paper without knowing that there is proper project management, uh, proper support by the administration and by the Legislative Council or the, the City Council to advance this payment. Uh, so, uh, so the controls are many. We hired, uh, we started yesterday morning, a, a purchasing manager. That individual's in that chain. He is in that chain. I am in that chain. Doug is in that chain. The mayor is in that chain. Uh, and we rest our good names on doing the right thing. Doesn't matter if it's five dollars or five million dollars. Um, so, uh, what I can, what I can say is that there will not be a check issued that doesn't come through my office. And a check and, and a, a request for payment will not come to me without going through other chains. Um, so, so the accountability is the names of the people. If we buy a tree, we buy one tree, the person who receives the tree signs a certificate of receipt. Says, I received this tree. It's what I bought. I bought a pin oak. I got a pin oak. And I can install it. And I installed it, so pay the vendor. I, I, I can't make that determination, but I can entrust people up the chain to do so. And so that's the mechanism, um, that we utilize in municipal service to ensure that we pay for what we get and we get what we paid for.
So the initial question that I was asking was also about how the person is chosen? To be the person. Do you put, do you put out a request for proposal? Do you put, how do you find the people that are gonna do the construction? Or are they just chosen by your...
Uh, no, it, it, it's, it's, it's project specific for something like the Art Center? Uh, yeah, I think, uh, and, and this has to be a conversation between us, all of us, including the mayor, um, as to whether, you, you know, we probably would want a project manager if we're doing ground-up construction. And, and that's gonna require funding, which, which engages this body. Uh, some of the other projects incorporated in, uh, the document that Doug went through do not require an outside project manager. They can be handled in-house. Um, and, and so, you know, I don't want to lump everything in the same category. Um, but the Art Center, um, it's big, i- i- it's a big project. And it, I, I think it deserves outside support to make sure that it is on time and under budget.
Thank you.
Yes.
So will all these projects go out to bid? Or will the project manager decide who does them?
They'll go out to bid.
The, it, it's, it's not really within our discretion to not go out to bid. If we, if we bring out, if, if we have, if we have an item that we think we know the right vendor for, and it's above the bid thresholds, then we have to bring it to you for review. So we, we, we don't, we, we just don't have discretion in that.
Thank you.
I just want to say one thing quick. Kathy, to your, which, I know what you're driving at. To your question, after we're done with this, this goes to the ARPA Committee. The ARPA Committee puts out the RFPs for anything that's gotta be bidded out. And they oversee it with the manager and everything. And nothing gets paid for until the job is completed, until it's done right. And that's when they, he goes to, uh, Mr. Jackson, and then that's when he signs a check. So everything goes out to bid through the ARPA Committee. They will oversee everything as far as any RFPs going out. Yes, Robin?
So we talked about, we saw the blocks where all the grids and how the flow was supposed to be, and we would like to be in more of those, you know, boxes. We talked about that. Um, sometimes as a city, we have, um, the tendency to, um, take too long on things, and this stuff is very time-sensitive. So is there, who is going to be like, okay, it's in Corporation Council now. Now it needs to go to the next step. Now it needs to go, you know, after... Who oversees all of that to make sure that it goes to the next, um, that it doesn't stay too long in one spot and that it goes to the next spot and it comes to pass? I don't know who that, who's that, who, who can answer that.
Uh, in, in my, in my, in my limited experience here, Mr. Coulter is, uh, pretty aggressive in keeping things, uh, on top of desk. Um, so as, uh, as, under his charter, um, position, ultimately, ultimately, uh, and, and you can feel free to just disagree with me, uh, ultimately, it is his responsibility to ensure that there is timeliness because we have to get the contracts in by twenty-four and the dollars out by twenty-six. And some, some of these things are, are gonna need just some, you know, some, some, some cat herding in order to achieve it.
Thank you.
All set? Anybody else?
I just want to...
Yes, you may.
Well, I did want to address a couple of things. Number one, um, I, I agree the council is going to be actively involved with this. They do control the purse strings. They have to vote on every single dollar before it is given to any other department. That is the way it works. That's what our charter says. So that's the way it's gonna be done. Um, the going out to bid, again, um, the, the committee that has been set up, we're closely with Finance, um, because they don't actually put out RFPs. They make the request through Finance, and then it's all vetted through the bidding process so that it's done correctly. So again, as I said, we're, we're going to do this stuff by the book. Well, I agree it's gonna go out to bid. No, we're not gonna have a project manager picking people or deciding that way without any kind of formal bidding process. It's just not gonna happen that way. And I hope that the council's in agreement with all of that. But during any of this, if there's any problems or any questions you have, please feel free to reach out to me or my office or, or Doug Coulter or, um, Scott Jackson. So that this way, I don't want you to think that, you know, you're not going, you, no, not get answers. No, we're gonna get answers. We want these projects done. We want them done as soon as possible. I don't want to wait till twenty-six or twenty-four. Um, and, and there's a lot of them that the sooner they are implemented, the better off our community will be. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else got anything to say? I just want to say, um, sure, I'm a little late, but happy birthday to Councilwoman Hamilton. Many, many more. And motion to adjourn.
All right, so everybody, everybody here's on my case.